Morning, everybody.
Morning.
It's September 24th, where'd the year go? Anyway, this is the regular meeting day of the Liberty County Commissioners Court, and this is a public meeting for the public hearing of the proposed budget fiscal year 2025 for Liberty County, Texas. So we do this first, and then we'll look at the another public hearing shortly about the tax rate, and then we'll move into the regular agenda at nine o'clock. So does anyone have any questions or concerns about the proposed budget for Liberty County, Mr. Swiger, come on up here and visit with us. Our friends from Cleveland are here with us today. Did you bring the mayor with you?
No, he wasn't able to make it this morning.
I wish he would have.
I want Sean with me, though.
Okay, well, Sean, good morning. Good morning. Good to see you.
Judge and Commissioners just wanted to come.
Can you push the button right there?
There you go. Hi, I'm Scott Swiger. I'm the city manager in the city of Cleveland, and I'm here on behalf of the city council, the mayor. I just wanted to say thank y'all. You know, this is something referring back to the fire reimbursement agreement that we have with the county. It's something we've been working on for a couple of years now. Two years ago, we started working on this because it is a challenge. We have, we're seeing the growth. Our costs for providing services for our area is continually increasing. And so last year at this time, we came before you and asked for additional funding. Of course, we understand budgets are tight. We're the same situation, you know? And so we asked for more, and of course, we told you at that time that we estimated our cost providing services outside the city to the counties about $400,000. But we thought it may be up to $600,000 this year. As of today of this year, so we're eight months into, nine months into the, I guess, 10 months into the fiscal year at this point, we're at $620, almost $625,000 on providing services within our fire district outside of the city limits. So, you know, I know in your budget that you're going to be looking at today, but there's $200,000 in there. And so we just want to say thank you, you know, for that contribution, that amount, you know, something that we're going to have to continue to look at as we continue to see our costs continue to rise, the growth continue to happen. We're going to have to continue to look at this on a regular basis, but we do want to come back. We've worked on this for over two, a year, almost two years now, and say thank you. We're making that progress. And so on behalf of the city, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your patience.
Hey, we do appreciate the service y'all provide up there, too. Y'all do a good job up there covering an area that we don't have much coverage.
No, that northern area around the north side of Cleveland, it's empty unless you get somebody coming down from over around Porter and Splendoro back that way.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We'll get off into a bigger discussion on the budget whenever the, we get it on the agenda item for the regular meeting. But if, for those of y'all that wouldn't want to look at it, it's online. It's, it's a lot of reading. It is a lot of reading.
Count the screen or two at that one.
Oh, yeah. Even in color. If I remember right, Greg, whenever we first came in in 2015, our budget was around $33 million, somewhere along in there. And it's, it's bumping around 80 now, but that's just with the, with the growth that we've had. And in all sincerity, no matter what we do, we're always two years behind. And it, and Scott, you know what I'm talking about there. It's no matter what happens, you can't ever catch up. It, there's, as the growth comes in, you have to, you have to cover it somehow. So then you look at your, the tax rate, and then, of course, the change in the law. Because there is such an uproar over appraisals, you know, the legislature found it to be a wonderful thing to, to change the names. What was it, Rick? It used to be the effective rate, and now it's called the.
I don't know, Judge, because I didn't remember the new one. Don't ask me to come back.
Yeah, it used to be called the effective rate, and then now it was. Yeah, effective with rollback, and now they call it the voter approval rate. That's now the rollback. And then the other is the effective rate is now the no new revenue rate.
You got it.
And that's just some new names that confuse people. Still the same thing. The odd part of it is that in 2015, there was about a 12-point gap between those two, and now there's maybe a three-point gap when you look at it. Yeah.
And actually, 8%.
Yeah, right.
Up to 8%.
They do.
And then now the cap is three and a half.
Yeah, if you have, you know, your debt service always comes out first, but the other side of it is we don't have much debt service because we've been behaving quite well. So that's when you get off into big projects for building, and then you look at those, and what will that be the effect down the road? So we do have a big project coming up that we will have to take into consideration, which is a new jail, Sheriff, because you've been out of room. You were out of room when Greg was sheriff. So anyway, that's just some of the things that we see on the radar. All right, anybody else got anything? Bruce? Nothing. You're still reading? Okay. All right, we'll close out this public hearing and move on to next here shortly. Okay, it's now 8:45 a.m., September 24th. We have a public meeting. It's a public hearing on the Liberty County proposed 2024 tax rate of .47000. As we've mentioned earlier, the, I remember in 2015, our tax rate was .5788, and remained there for about four, five, six years. And it had been that prior to the 2015 for a couple of years. And now it is .47000. So that, that's what the proposed rate is. This is a public hearing. If anyone has anything they'd like to say, then feel free to speak. Just for those that would like to know, the general fund M and O, which is a big one we work off of, that tax rate is .3676. The Roden Bridge M and O, which I don't get to have a thing to do with because I got four commissioners that that's their money, is .0882. Our debt service fund is .0142. And when you add those together, and the total is .4700. The proposed tax rate, of course, is .4700. No new revenue rate is .4546, and voter approval tax rate is .4741. And what that means on the voter approval tax rate, should we have gone beyond that number, it would have to be put before the public for a vote of acceptance. So we stayed below that and just a little bit above the no new revenue tax rate. So if anybody has anything they'd like to visit about, please feel free to do so. Well, I'll give it a few minutes. Oh, there they are. Chief Needlin, that's just for you, okay? You bet. Good to see you, Don. You bet. Thank you for coming today. All right. Hearing no comments, then we'll go ahead and close this meeting and get ready for the regular meeting to start at nine o'clock. Good morning again, everybody.
Morning.
All righty, it's September 24th, 2024, regular meeting, Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas. The records show that Commissioner Karbowski, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitmire are present. Commissioner Wilson is at some appointments this morning, so he will be indisposed, but I can vote in his place. So just letting you know, we're good to go now. We just had to get that clarification. The, we do have a quorum established, so we do have business for the court this morning. So if you would all rise, Lee, would you lead us in our pledges?
Yes, sir.
And Sheriff, you'd lead us in our invocation?
Please face the American flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please face the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Prayer, please. Your heavenly Father, Lord, I want to thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings that you give us, Lord. We thank you for being a loving God, forgiving God. And, Lord, we ask for your protection. We ask that you be with those that are ill and comfort them. And, Lord, we know you're the great physician, and your will will be done in all cases. Lord, I'm thankful for the judge and the commissioners. I ask, Lord, that you be with them today as they go through this agenda, and the decisions they make will benefit and be for the good of the people. I thank you for all the county employees. I thank you for the visitors here with the court. I thank you for the representatives from the Congress and other places, Lord, that are here with us. Lord, I just ask that, I pray for peace throughout the world. I pray for protection over first responders. And, Lord, just be with us, keep us safe, forgive us when we fall short. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sheriff. Notices and proclamations. Needley, I don't think we had any notices or proclamations today, so we'll move right along. The public comment, I don't believe anyone signed up for public comment. Our buddy from Cleveland earlier addressed the court, Scott Swiger, thank you for coming. City manager up in Cleveland, appreciate you being here. And Sean Anderson, Fire Chief up in Cleveland, thank y'all. The number six is declare conflicts of interest. We have any conflicts today?
Number 10, Lord.
Number 10, okay. You got that, Lee? All righty. Move on to consent agendas. Everyone had an opportunity to look at this, and if so, do we have any add-ons to Wayne or Kim, we have any add-ons on your side?
No.
You don't? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. All right, got a motion to approve the consent agenda as, as a motion and second. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to the regular agenda. Commissioner One Precinct, one, Commissioner Karbowski, has an information item from QYK Brands LLC, and they're going to present a project that they're looking to, to do over in Raywood. So, gentlemen, if y'all are here today, will come on up and visit with us.
They might be not in the home, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi. You have a laptop for inspection?
Yes, I do.
Open it up. Okay, can you get it ready again? Tell me you want to push the button for me. Is it coming on? Oh, you know what? My bad. My bad. Yeah, look, I'm here. There is, there's a little menu.
Oh, yes.
And you're going to go to the settings, getting to get towards the QYK.
Oh, hassle.
Not under that. Maybe it's this company. I can't. One of them is, there we go. Is that yours? Do whatever come up? You see that one? Special counsel, technically one of the two, I think. Well, one prosecutor wants to defend, so that's the two parts that we have here. Yeah, he could use this one, maybe. Yeah, this is one of these one here. It's one of the screens, and then you can bench one. It's got to be one of the two. Okay, there we go.
Is it possible to lock it?
I'm going to pull yours down. If I turn this one, it's going to kill it? And make it full screen? Okay, yeah, there.
Now you might need to step up because, and tap this mic and get that turned on so we can get recorded when you're speaking, okay?
Yeah, his screen, hold on.
Okay. Yeah, be sure, be sure and tell everybody who you are so that Lee can write it down.
Okay. Good morning, Major Smith. My name is Alexander Griffiths. I am the executive administrator of the QYK Brands, which is a company based in California just south of LA. Obviously, I'm not originally American. I'm American, so apologies for the accent in advance. Good to see you again, Your Honor, Judge Knight, and made my acquaintance already with Commissioners Karbowski and Arthur, and pleased to meet you. So I'll take the next approximately 30 minutes to brief the court and the commission on the objectives of this project. It's the fully industrial-based expansion of methylchloric acid. It's a project which is seed-funded by the federal government through the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services through a special office run by HHS or the Administration for Preparedness and Response, ASPR. The main aim of the project is to reshore certain industrial capabilities and capacities back from, mostly from Asia, back to the United States. And QYK, then, to put a background and context, based in Orange County, California, specializing in specialty chemicals and materials and consumer packaging. It became, there was a lot of media focus on the company during the COVID crisis because the company ended up making just under 30% of the country's requirement for sanitary waste, just as it's becoming, create shortage of supply. And it just so happened that that kind of material, like PPE for medical purposes, comes from not just China, but from Wuhan province in China, which was the epicenter of the pandemic. So there was a real supply crisis in the U.S. for that kind of material. ASPR, then, to briefly introduce, is the leading government federal agency on medical and public health preparedness and recovery for disasters, emergencies, pandemics, et cetera. The mine, the MAA capacity, methylchloric acid, is considered to be one of the critical chemicals for U.S. industry because it's used in so many different applications, particularly with plastics, man-made rubbers, coatings, paint, et cetera. It's also used in as a pre-polymer for non-woven fabrics, which is what medical PPE is made The contract between QYK and HHS was awarded in December 2023, so we're nine, 10 months into it now. The, the competitive bid was first published in 2021, so we wrote our proposal to HHS in something that was mid-2021. There was a process of about two years with the selection of the vendor, which turned out to be us. There were probably two dozen to 30 applicants. Once the shortlist was made, they went through a period of about 12 months of due diligence in the final cycle of QYK.
Is there, is there an acronym, next relation for QYK, what does it stand for?
It's, no, it's, it's something to do with the private owners. It's a.
Okay, they're names.
Yeah, exactly.
Got you.
They call it QUICK for short.
QUICK, okay.
The industrial-based expansion initiative, which is part of the HHS ASPR program, which I briefly touched upon. It's something which is getting very big in the federal government now with this idea of reshoring a lot of industrial capabilities and capacities. And the money in this case is called the seed funding, which is just under $50 million for this project, originally comes from the Defense Department because it's considered to be a national security issue with bringing industrial capabilities back to U.S. shores. Methychloric acid production, it's, it's a precursor for polymers, as I mentioned, for plastics and coatings, et cetera. The methodology which the company plans to use is organic, so it'll be using natural glucose, mainly from corn. So the, the inputs are non-chemical or natural in nature to produce the methylchloric acid. The site details, it's just eight miles east of here, in just north of Raywood, north of the railway line, 660 acres. I don't know if anybody here is familiar with the Steffick Trust, where the, the previous owners. I don't know if anybody here is familiar with the Steffick Trust, where the, the previous owners, which QYK bought the property from, abandoned, maybe. Uh, the boundaries are along the, the southern edge. It's, uh, just north of the, the railway line, north of the Highway ninety. Uh, to the west, it's along the, uh, farm road, uh, to twenty-eight thirty. Uh, the northern boundary is, is going across country, which I'll show you an image of in a minute. And then the eastern boundary roughly, uh, just to the west of the farm track or farm road one-eight-two. I'm sure everyone is highly familiar with the terrain.
Right on between seven seventy and eight, uh, twenty-eight thirty.
Exactly. Um, there's a natural gas, um, pipeline running from the southwest to the northeast of the property, so from the easements. And, uh, we intend to utilize, uh, the gas flow from that. I'll go into a bit more detail at, uh, slightly later on. Logistics connections, obviously, the, um, the supporting logistics is going to be initially by a road through, uh, truck trailer and eventually a mixture of truck trailer and, and rail. I'm hoping to be able to build a spur from the EP railway line, uh, more or less where it, uh, where it goes past the, uh, the concrete and the grain storage facilities north of Raywood. Uh, just the, the images there. Um, actual, so six hundred and sixty acres. The acreage which we're intending to use, which is roughly a hundred, is that southeastern, um, part of the, of the property. The reason we chose that is because of the, uh, the design of the rail at that point. And also there was a, um, feeling that, um, if we put the plant behind the existing assets, it's a little bit more discreet than if it's right by the road, uh, further to the west. So of course it would be visible, but it would be slightly less visible because you already have some industrial assets there. From the county records, um, the piece of ground we're actually going to be building on first is just missing on that edge in southeast. That's the, um, provisional plot plan. It's come from our, uh, process engineers. Um, I say provisional because that's all being finalized, uh, over the next, uh, two to three weeks. And we would provide the, uh, the finished product to the commission should they wish to see it. So the, the contract, um, mandates, um, QYK has a capacity for, um, MAA of seven thousand metric tons per annum. Uh, there is, however, an ambition to, because it's, that's the basis of the business. And the US government has the right to, um, have that supply. We, we have to guarantee that we have that capacity so that if ever there's a need, then we would direct all that, uh, product flow to, uh, federal resources. But because it's a, it's a business in itself, there's an intention to go up to thirty thousand metric tons per annum. Uh, the key equipment and systems, um, I'll go through some three-D renderings, um, which give the visual image of what the plant will basically look like. The land use, there's, uh, six easements across the property, mostly from, uh, southwest and northeast. Uh, those have been confirmed with the county records. We have a, an in-depth report from a, a property lawyer in Houston, which we would provide the, the commission with, should they seek to have it. It's a six-page report. Uh, there are links inside the report to click onto that you don't get a lot of background supporting information from the county records. Um, so in terms of the easements and their restrictions, none of them pose any problems to the, um, the intention to develop the property in terms of their depth or location. There is a height restriction, however, running across the, uh, sort of more or less north to south and the extreme western side of the property because of the municipal airport. But we actually have no intention to build in that quadrant anyway, so it's not really going to have any effect on it. Let's go through a series of three-D images. Um, these are generic. Unfortunately, we had planned to have the, the specific, uh, three-D renderings available for today, but, um, we failed them, that's our apologies. But we will provide that in the coming three weeks or so. So this is generic, but it is representative of, uh, of an MAA plant, and it is roughly representing, what, seven thousand to thirty thousand, uh, MTPA would look like. So you have a, um, a series of, of, of tanks. Um, so you have the stainless steel tanks. These large ones are for, uh, storage, uh, for the finished products. Eventually, they'll be loaded into these, um, pallets here, which is ready for transportation. Uh, just a bit above that are the cooling towers. Coming back into the right, you have the fermentation and, um, reaction tanks. So it's a fairly contained space. Uh, at the back, at the top, uh, would be a small office block, which you'll see more in a minute.
Gas containment been engineered into the design if there was a catastrophic failure?
Yes.
Yeah. In burns or concrete?
It's under burns.
Burns.
And just a, another angle. Uh, fairly small office. I think we would have, um, no more than fifty people actually working in the office at any one time. It's not a huge asset. Uh, the rail link, we, we, we started the discussion with, um, with Union Pacific, although we haven't watched it by any stretch of the imagination. But there, there's an assumption that we can, uh, build the, uh, the spur because based on the, uh, the throughput, it'll be about three hundred and fifty cars a month when the, uh, when the acid is fully running. So that's, that's enough. In their eyes, that's enough to justify the expensive, um, which of course we would mostly pay for, putting the rails on. So that would reduce the, the amount of truck, truck traffic going in and out of the property. First of you of the, um, fermentation and reaction tanks. Um, fairly extensive above-the-ground, uh, piping across the asset. Uh, there's a great pass to the right there with the fans on that. There's a little bit of black towels, like cooling towers. And then more overhead view of the whole plant. As I say, this is representative. This is not a specific three-D rendering, which we're expecting in the coming weeks, which we provide the commission with. Um, I briefly touched on this, but the, the road access, um, still to be confirmed. Uh, rail, um, also to be confirmed, got to slip. Look at this one. Well, uh, the only assumption is that the main, uh, road access for the truck trailers would be from the, a little bit north of the, uh, southwestern corner. And the rail spur, obviously, partly to do with the site selection for the, uh, the plant itself, is just to the north of the, um, the concrete works there.
So actually, you won't be utilized in any county roads. You'll be used in the farm market twenty-eight thirty.
That's, that's the plan, yes.
And how many employees will this facility?
I'll, I'll go through the economics impact from one of the slides.
Okay.
Um, let's just cut the slides forward. The, on the power, we, the, the plant will be up to a hundred megawatts, uh, depending on, on what's happening and where it's coming from. Um, the, the plan is, um, medium term, but not immediately, that we would eventually establish onsite power generation, so we'd have our own distributed power. Um, the ambition would be that grid power would then become the, the power redundancy plant. So the idea is to actually produce it, uh, by utilizing the, one of the main gas pipelines running from, uh, southwest, which is across the property. That's currently being assessed for feasibility because of the flows and the pressures, uh, with, um, uh, two gas companies that are sort of consulting to provide this information.
You've already been in discussion with, uh, uh, Public Utilities Commission of Texas in this regard, as far as your power generation?
No, not yet, no.
Okay.
The, the power generation plan is very early, so they've really only started going down that road about six weeks ago, so they have a lot of work to do before we can confirm that feasibility.
Okay.
Um, the other future objective is, uh, QYK's, uh, current, um, core business or original business for CPG in Orange County. Uh, in order to, um, basically sort of aggrandize the, the business and consolidate, there'd be a plan to bring that business, um, collated, uh, co-located on the site. Obviously not right on that, uh, specific southeastern corner, but somewhere on the side we're planning to bring that, which is, in essence, a, a warehouse. Inside the warehouse is, uh, capacity for non-work material production, um, and the production of the household chemicals, which I explained before. On the job creation, um, for the seven thousand metric tons per annum, we have an estimate of about three hundred and twenty direct jobs from between semi-skilled to skilled. Um, as the capacity of the plant goes up, obviously there'll be more jobs related. It wouldn't triple as, as the output does, but we would estimate another one hundred direct jobs by the time we get up to full capacity. Um, add into that, um, as I just mentioned, the plan to move the CPG business from California to Liberty County. That'd be another eighty to one hundred direct jobs. Um, the power generation plant, um, even though it's, it's, we're looking into the feasibility now, but if we manage to, that's, that's another couple of dozen direct jobs, you'd imagine.
Curious on your, uh, job creation, what would the salary range be?
Um, for the highly skilled, um, they could go up to about, um, in terms of cost to us, the social cost, et cetera. Uh, those could be in the region of fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars per month. Um, down to the lower skill, we'd be talking, um, five to six thousand. Good, good jobs. Obviously, um, we'd love to be able to say that all of the jobs would be for people who are residents in the county, but, uh, clearly it would be, uh, people who are already working in the, uh, chemicals and energy industry, um, in some greater Houston area. But certainly a lot of the jobs, we would imagine, could, uh, either come from current residents or bring residents into, into the county because they're coming for the work. And we haven't done any kind of, um, creative accounting or looking into the implications for direct jobs to support the plant and the CPG business, but, uh, we would assume there would be some. We just haven't put a number on those yet.
Yeah.
In terms of the investment volume, the US government's, uh, fifty-eight, fifty million, it's actually forty-eight million. Uh, that represents seed funding, and, um, although the price tag seems to be going up almost every week. Uh, we're, uh, looking at, um, a full investment volume for the, uh, full capacity at about three hundred million dollars. Um, so the, uh, the, uh, delta between the seed funding and the, uh, co, the cost or the requirement of, of capital is what we're working on at the moment. So we expect to have all the funding in place, um, by about, uh, end of Q two or beginning of Q three, twenty twenty-five. Uh, environmental considerations, as we mentioned, um, the, the process of using is the biological route. There, there is a chemical route for MAA, but we're using biological one. Um, which is naturally without chemical inputs. Uh, the fermenting process, we submitted the air emissions, um, permit application on the eleventh of September. Uh, we're expecting, it takes about, uh, six weeks, we expect, according to TCQ. Uh, we're expecting a, hopefully a positive response by, um, around the third week of October onwards. Uh, wastewater permit application, we're in the process with TCQ and, um, a professional agency that's helping us with the, the permitting, um, design. But we expect to have the application for the wastewater ready, uh, by week twenty-five, so, uh, around the first week of November this year. Uh, the permitting process for Liberty County, obviously, we would need building permits tomorrow. We have a, uh, pre-planning meeting with the Liberty County, um, Permits and Inspections Office. Under, under Sovedale, Soveday, I think she's...
Yes, she's right here.
And, um, the permit application submission, we, uh, are expecting to have the architectural drawings, uh, ready, uh, around the end of December. So what we've understood from tomorrow's meeting and subsequent, uh, contacts, what we have to do together is ready to submit, I think we expect. Um, community liaison, um, we consider that liaison, uh, with the community starts today with this, uh, court hearing. Um, we do plan to have a, a briefing event, uh, open to the public, uh, before Christmas this year. We haven't figured out how that's done, but we're, we're gonna start working on that very soon and find a venue and get a date and look at how we, uh, sort of market or announce the opportunity to come and listen. Um, I was informed, Your Honor, that there's also a potential, um, public hearing here at the Commissioners Court, which we'd be more than happy to, to, um, present at that event as well. And we're going to have a full-time community liaison officer from Q one next year. So in a kind of, uh, public information requirement, outreach briefing to get the community comfortable with what's coming or what COVID's coming. Uh, that'll be starting in earnest, uh, beginning of next year. Power requirements, um, as I mentioned, the, um, power, the assessed power requirement is going to be up to at least, uh, capacity of a hundred megawatts. We're going to be working on, uh, providing our own power, uh, which would be through, um, gas turbines, uh, using, utilizing the gas pipeline across the property. We might look at feasibility of sun, solar as well. Um, and that we are working, uh, with, um, the, uh, state utilities, uh, to look at bringing, uh, enough grid power to the sun as well.
Yeah, probably the sooner the better with, with those guys because they get a little bit prickly about power.
Yeah.
And, and you providing your own is probably a wonderful idea, but they're, they're wanting to have some input.
Yes, indeed.
Okay.
Particularly when we have access, we, access, so we, we...
You know, one good, yeah.
Have to be doing it.
One good thing I might, uh, tell you that you're in luck today because, uh, two of Dr. Babin's representatives are here with us, and he's our congressman. Uh, Lanny and, and Will, y'all would... Yeah, there you are. Thank y'all for being here. Anything that, uh, you might need to run through the congressman's office.
Yeah.
Here we are.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's, that's actually a huge task, and it's something we've started already, but we're, um, uh, basically at the feasibility stage now, how the power would be brought in for, for core power. Uh, actually, while we're going through introductions, if I can just introduce the QYK's, uh, CEO and CEO of... Got stuck in traffic.
Thank y'all for making it.
Uh, yeah, the, the natural gas, um, we, um, that really kicked off about two weeks ago with the feasibility study. Uh, but the pressures, uh, five hundred PSI flow through about a hundred thousand, um, cubic feet an hour. Um, the initial response from, um, from the gas company is feasible, but how that will be delivered, uh, that's being looked into. We expect to have a feasibility study response by end of October this year. The, uh, the flow-through, of course, would, would increase, uh, we're estimating about a million cubic feet an hour once we get up to the thirty thousand metric tons per annum production capacity. Um, the water and wastewater management, uh, we're going for groundwater, which we, initial assessment is that we have enough on the, on the property on site. Uh, the processed wastewater would go up to, um, a height of up to two hundred and sixty thousand, uh, gallons per day, which is our expected maximum. Um, the utilities, uh, wastewater about six hundred thousand. Uh, treatment options, we're looking into this, there's various, um, ways we can do this. We're in, uh, consultation with Tetra Tech, who are experts in that field. So they've, um, they've done an initial assessment. We have a, an assessment report with a kind of a, um, not an offer yet, but they've, they've offered us the technical methodologies. And we just have to go into how these will be selected, but of course it's also waiting on the TCQ, um, permit application to see what we can or cannot do. The, just the, there's lots of, uh, key milestones along the, the timeline, but just to go through some of the, the major, um, milestone points. The, um, the engineering side, process engineering, we're at, um, between sixty and ninety percent at the moment. Uh, we have to be a hundred percent complete according to our contract with HHS by January twenty-five. Uh, we're hoping that, of course, depending on how we go with the construction plans. But we're, we're estimating and hoping that we can start the, uh, construction, which would be the, um, the logistics routes, the roads, uh, the, um, utility building office first. And then subsequently, we'd start to go into the process of building the plant itself across next year. Uh, but we want construction to be completed by the end of next year. Um, commissioning, there's two commissioning and testing phases. Uh, the first one, we need to execute in April twenty twenty-six, the second and final, August twenty twenty-six. And, um, production capacity of seven thousand metric tons per annum, according to our federal government contract by August twenty twenty-six. At the moment, we are, uh, we're not running times at this stage, um, that's what... And, uh, we, uh, we expect to, we're driving very hard, but we're, um, going through all the, the legal and technical and engineering processes. And so far, it's looking good, but of course one never knows, uh, what might, uh, come to as an obstacle, which we have to negotiate to get around that at the time. Uh, we're hoping that we'll make it by August twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Um, next steps, we're just, uh, very much near term. Um, community outreach events, as I mentioned, in Q four this year, liaison, community liaison, office... officer in place by Q1 next year in general, and we've got the ongoing permit approval process, which is the, for air, we've submitted the permit application. Water, we expect to do so in late October or November, and building permits subject to discussions, pre-planning, which starts tomorrow. And I think I've consumed my verification of time.
All right.
If the Commissioner has any questions, I'll do my best to answer those. Some of the more technical questions, perhaps, of CEO and COO, they're both engineer-trained or not, and we will look forward to, any more in-depth questions, we'll look forward to providing you with supporting documentation.
What type of raw material will be coming in?
We would be using liquid glucose as the feedstock.
Derivative from corn.
Correct.
Some of the hurdles I just see in making your, your schedule. You'd have overhead storage, water storage, drill a well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You'd have to work out the details with UP on the side track.
Correct.
And the length of the track.
Yeah.
Okay. So your water and wastewater, wastewater side of it too, and then the drainage aspect.
Yeah.
That's, that's the concerns I'm pretty sure the Commissioner will have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, once the water is, is treated, what is the disposal then of that water and how it's going to affect the drainage of that area?
Yeah, I mean, there are two or three main options, which Tetra Tech is looking at at the moment. Rakesh, would you be able to cover that area in more detail?
Well, we're.
Come up here to the front, please.
Well, our goal is to treat the water as much as possible to remove the particulate waste, minimize everything, so it could be considered as, you know, just, it could be just disposed of in the regular canal. So Tetra Tech is, is helping this, that they're guiding us through that, and we hope to set up all the treatment on-site, and that's a goal to have to complete water treatment for the wastewater and hopefully what's allowed to be disposed of.
Because there is a drainage ditch that runs through that property that is controlled by our drainage district number one out of Raywood, that you would probably have to contact before you could dump anything into that. But I'm sure with the permitting department and stuff, we'll be looking at what's being dumped into there along with TECQ regulations.
So, yeah, TECQ has to follow our plan before we reset the treatment package on-site. And of course, everything is monitored by TCQ, and we understand that there's strict reporting to be done in terms of how we're treating it and the regular testing of what's being disposed.
Okay.
All right.
All righty. Well, gentlemen, thank y'all so much for coming in there. Alexander, you're, it was easy to understand, y'all, a whole lot easier than some folks from Louisiana, okay? Thank y'all, really. It's, it's an intriguing project, and especially the timeline that you're proposing. And let me know how that goes for you with the Public Utilities Commission, because there's other projects that could be likewise the solution. So if there's anything we can do to help you in that regard, just let us know.
Yeah, we regard those aspects as the highest risk of delays. We hope not that that's the kind of aspect we think, if anything, it's going to put a blockage on the data line.
Okay. And I would encourage y'all to get to know Lanny and Will here today with Dr. Babin's office, because they'll be watching.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Y'all got anything else?
Liberty County looks forward to working with y'all.
You bet.
I mean, just as a summary, we're very excited to be here in this county. We know that there's a lot of industrial development west of here, south of here, east of here. We do understand that the plans for this plant, there were people in the county for whom, they live in this county because it doesn't have stuff like that, but we're mindful of that. We believe that the asset we're building will be as discreet as can be, partly why we've located it where it is behind existing industrial assets. And we think also that the economic development side coming in will, on balance, be for the greater benefit of life in the county, we hope. That's what we're, our sincere intentions to make it so.
Good. Y'all can, y'all can sponsor a softball team over in Endeavors or Raywood.
I'll take on the rules.
Definitely not something that was possible in California, so we're happy.
Good. Good deal. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody?
Where are you getting your call from?
I think I wasn't calling from there. You still haven't worked out the sources, but you understand there's plenty.
Do you feel like there could be a local supplier?
We're happy to work with local suppliers. It's true. From our market study, there's a lot of supply here in Texas.
And too bad you can't use rice. We got plenty of that.
I mean, the, all of the inputs were actually required to, unless there's any kind of excuse justification, it should all be from the US. Looking at our production methodology, we believe a lot of the inputs would come from Texas, not just the US.
Okay. Well, the more corn you use, the, maybe the cheaper the price we'll get for corn, and all the deer hunters will be a whole lot happier.
They are.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming in today very much. Okay. Yeah. All right, that's just a information only from Quick Brands LLC. I would ask the court that we consider taking no action and have a.
Make a motion to take no action.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg, take no action. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-two, for me, is consider and approve renewal of the Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefit Plan for Plan Year 2025. The renewal deadline is October seventh, twenty twenty-five, and Kim, do you want to run this one down to us, or?
Sure, Judge.
Thank you.
So TAC has offered up their renewal rates for calendar year 2025.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Is that better? Okay. And again, TAC has offered up their rates for calendar year 2025, and they have a five point five percent increase in the health plan premium rates and a negative one percent increase, a negative one percent decrease in the dental plan rates. There are no changes to the life rates and no changes to the vision rates for the upcoming calendar year. So we met with the representatives from TAC, and they went through our renewal. They did tell us that the renewal rate for the overall pool was four point six percent, and so ours is slightly higher at five point five percent, and that's all based on experience and, and the plans that they have for the county. So that's really about it for this agenda item.
Okay, and this is also considered in the new budget, if I'm not mistaken, correct, Wayne? This is reflected in the new budget as well, correct?
No, we approve.
Got a motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-three, consider and approve the allocation of the 2025 insurance premium rates between employees and the county. Kim?
So in the renewal package, TAC needs to know who's going to pay for what. So on the five point five percent increase in health and the negative one percent decrease on the dental plan, they need to know if the county's going to take all of that or if the county wants to allocate five point five percent increase premium to the employees and the county side, or how the court would like to allocate the change in the rate.
Wayne?
There's no decision. I mean, but one thing, you know, I'll sit at the floor, I don't know, but one thing is the dependent coverage, you know, something, you know, need, might need to look at some of that cost sharing and all that. I think there's actually more people who are dependent on the county's insurance than there's employees.
Yep. Kim, what's the recommendation in this?
In the past, the court has chosen both ways. The court has said, okay, the county will take all of the increase, or in some years, the county has said, okay, we'll take our five point five percent, and the employees can take their five point five percent. It's a business decision of the court.
All right, discussion.
I move that we approve the thing with the county of, uh, pay the increase.
Agreed. Second.
Good. Got a motion from Greg.
Judge, if we can clarify Commissioner Archer's item, so he's saying that the county would take the five point five percent increase in pool, but the county would also take the negative one percent on the dental, correct? Is that?
Correct.
Yeah, all of it.
Wayne, is that incorrect, is that figured into the budget?
We estimate, we estimate that's the camera budget. I mean, there's, there's nobody that we can get the number right exactly on the health insurance, because you don't know, there's so much employee turnover, you don't know if it's going to be just an employee or you just, it's going to be a fraud with the right and the health insurance. But there's ample money in budgeted in the health insurance line, I was in the department to cover the increase.
Okay, so we got a motion by Greg, second by David, for the, absorb the five percent and the negative one percent. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-four, consider and approve adopting the salaries of the elected officials for the fiscal year ended in 2025, and we've already had the public hearings on these, and it's just a matter of over-acceptance at this point.
No, we approve.
Motion from Greg, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Is that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-five, consider and approve the adoption of Liberty County budget for fiscal year October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Wayne, you have any high points that you want to touch on? We've already gone over the.
Oh, one thing, I like, over this year, over the last few years, we've seen is, I guess, is the people moving in and, but sales tax has really increased our projections for next year. Our sales tax was projected next year to be six point seven million dollars. And I think nine years ago, in county offices, like two and a half billion dollars. And the sales tax, what the sales tax does, and looking county op didn't collect the half sent sales taxes, and what that does, it reduces the property tax that taxpayers pay on their property, reduces the fee. But I think this year, we projected a one point five million dollar deficit in the general fund, and usually that ends up with a pretty healthy surplus because we don't extend all the, all the lines and.
It might show a deficit now, but at the end of the final audit, it will come back with a surplus, and so therefore.
I'm predicting it will be a pretty good, pretty good surplus. Like I say, you got to put, you put money in everybody, and all these departments, everybody to run their departments, but people don't spend all the money appropriately in their departments. It was real concern on our revenue projections this year also.
Okay. All right.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve, any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Is that motion?
Your Honor, did it, on a?
Yes, sir.
Is this also the personnel budget?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we just approved it prior.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, this is the whole nine yards, as they call it. Okay. All right, number eight-six, consider and approve adopting the 2024 tax rate of point four seven zero zero per hundred, and we had our hearing earlier discussing this and the reasons why. It, I do remember, though, ten years ago, roughly, when we walked in the door, the tax rate was five seven eight eight, and so now it's down to point four seven zero zero. Of course, there's more people that live here, and then I'm sure you, the appraisals have gone up, which I don't see any CAD people here, so I can't say anything to them about it, but the other side of that is, when you look at it, I'll, I'll give you the, it's the Reader's Digest version. The legislature makes law. The comptroller enforces a law of the legislature. They pass the law down to the CAD. From the CAD, it goes to the taxing entities, which there's a whole bunch of them in Liberty County, including us, but all the cities, school districts, DSDs, the drag districts, you name it. But that's just the way it works. So when you were looking for somebody to put the finger at about this, careful about that finger point, but the idea is, look at it where it originates, and it originates in the legislature. We just have to abide by the rules. Okay, so, consider and approve adopting the tax rate at point four seven zero zero. What's say the court?
No, approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Is that motion does carry? Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-seven, consider and approve the 2025 fiscal year position budget and the 2025 employee salaries. That's pretty self-explanatory. The position budget is inclusive.
Can I add something?
Please do.
As position budget, there's one, I've had, there's been some, I'm giving confusion over this. On all these full-time positions, there's a rubber there, but the way we did the budget, which are basically proven is a hourly rate that comes out this total. So all these salaries, except for the shares part, they're paying on a hundred seventy-one hours, but like everybody else, the salaries are based on two thousand and eighty hours at hourly rate. So basically, y'all proving the hourly rate for these positions. And on the part-time positions, one thing needs to be clarified, you know, they're based on thirty hours of rest, okay? But one thing, these positions, like if it's a road bridge, it. precinct one, they all look at their hourly rate and says $25 an hour. Well, that part-time position shouldn't be paid over that $25 an hour where the full-time position is, so you guys understand what I'm saying? So you can't get a part-time position in there where you're paying everybody else $25 an hour and pay that part-time position to the same job, $35. You all agree?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, eight, from our folks over at Line Barter, our tax attorneys, considering approve the following private resale bid on delinquent tax properties. At one, Jay Hernandez, property ID is 56991 for $3,000.
Looked over this, everything looks pretty good on it. Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, nine, from Ms. Soliday, over in Permits and Inspections, consider and approve invoice number 12901 uh .00 from Schaumburg and Polk Incorporated for the Ames Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project Services in the amount of $33,800 using our funds. Uh, Ms. Domain, the mayor, has signed off on the invoice.
Yes, sir. That's pretty much it on that one. Um, I send everything to the mayor for approval first before I send it in.
How many more steps do we have in this before?
There's a couple more, but I don't know exactly how many. I'll have to look it up.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 10, from Ms. Soliday, consider and approve Santa Fe Section Eight Roads. The county maintenance, LJ Engineering did a re-inspection on September 10th of this year. Santa Fe's two-year maintenance was completed on September 13th of this year. LJ Engineering letter of approval is attached in the packet as we do require. Uh, what, Melinda, you have anything else you need to add to this? It's pretty self-explanatory.
There were just a couple minor things, but that can all be handled when we get the final, we go in through there. But they sense, don't see any reason why we shouldn't approve it.
What say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. David, you willing to say, Greg? Big party? Yeah. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 11, permits inspections, um, consider and approve the engineering department agreement with ETM for GIS and mapping services for permitting software. The initial cost is a one-time fee of $8,500 for compiling data into the database, then an annual fee of $3,000 not to exceed 5,000 going forward per year. Proposal is attached in the packet. What's this gonna do, Melinda? Gotta give us a rundown.
Well, the CAD has been very helpful with this and some other projects we've got going on in our office right now. Y'all approved our new permitting software. However, we're having issues getting correct GIS and mapping data to be able to upload it from the CAD. So this company is going to do nothing but the GIS and the mapping for us so it can be uploaded into the new software. Because we have not been able to implement it and we are having more and more difficult time with our old software and I'm trying to get this taken care of. I'm afraid we're gonna have a crash. So um, I, I'm desperate to get it going. We've got four clerks now and they're all in the system at the same time and I keep hearing them all day long, having to tell each one another to get out of the system so someone can actually print something because it's not going through automatically. Because this, that, you know, that system is really, really old. And it's, it's been in use for quite some time.
Yeah, when you said the word crash, I saw Nick kind of cringe back there.
Yeah, I know. It's really scary.
Nick, your take on this? Your take on this?
Uh, what was it? I apologize. Software?
Yes.
Yeah, that we've already discussed.
Yeah, the software. This is the company that's gonna do the GIS and mapping data.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Number 12 from Sheriff Raider, consider and approve donating a 2013 Tahoe with 280,000 miles, I know those are gingerly used miles, from the Rio County Sheriff's Office to the Plum Grove Police Department. Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Chief Monroy leads the other units. We had that presented by the connect office, but we could donate to him. Second.
280,000 miles, is that included the recopy to haul it up there? Matthew, you don't have any problem with this?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from David, second from Bruce to approve. I'm not even gonna ask for discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Number eight, 13, from Mr. Poston, consider and approve reimbursement resolution and certificate for reimbursement resolution allowing Liberty County to reimburse itself for expenses associated with construction of the new Liberty County Jail, including the acquisition of real property, which is said to be paid for with proceeds from a certificate of obligation to be issued in an amount not to exceed 175 million dollars. Matthew, that's a whole lot of words saying that we're gonna pay ourselves back for whatever expenses we have come out of the general fund uh with the proceeds from the certificate of obligation, correct?
That's correct. Catherine's ready to speak on detail or on, this sounds like a tool we'd use in, in past construction projects.
And that's correct. I have worked closely with counsel at Bickerstaff on this matter and we have prepared this resolution to essentially cover the costs of the purchase of the 36 acres to build the new jail as well as surveys, architecture costs, um, that will be repaid to the county once we receive that certificate of obligation.
We've been there one year and a half.
Exactly, yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 14, uh, from Mr. Poston over in the county attorney's office, consider and approve resolution accepting a one-time donation from Ellison Development LLC to Liberty County in the amount of $300,000 for the specific purpose of East River Road located in Precinct Three, Liberty County, Texas. Well, David, that ought to make you happy.
Oh, no, he's gonna appreciate it, we're gonna.
Oh, okay.
Um, so at this time, um, and what this is, if you recall, a couple of months ago, the court approved the creation of a public improvement district for a new subdivision going in by Ellison Development. It's called the Gemini subdivision. We have several things on this agenda related to that. But part of the agreement, or really actually out of the goodness of Ellison's heart, they have decided to donate 340,000 to Precinct Three to repave East River Road in its entirety, not just the portion that they are traveling down to construct their subdivision, but repaving it up into the stop sign. So for right now, I would ask that you table this resolution. So on the October 8th agenda, we can come back and put that new amount on there.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from David to table, and we will come back and visit this in the next court.
And thank you, sir.
Call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 15, from Mr. Poston, consider and approve a letter to be written by the county attorney's office to Ellison Development LLC approving a road bond in the amount of 904,900 for the construction of Gemini subdivision section one in Precinct Three, Liberty County, Texas. Matthew?
Uh, Catherine.
Catherine?
Uh, again, this has to do with the Gemini subdivision that is going in. Uh, Ellison Development has requested a road bond in the amount of 904,000 doll- and $900. That has gone through Melinda's office, but they have asked for a letter stating that we would grant that. And of course, I don't do anything without the commissioner's court and their approval. So if you looked in your packet, you would find a, a letter I have, have written, but I would ask the court to approve that. So I can send that to Ellison Development.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from David, second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 16, from county attorney's office, consider and approve amendment to development agreement with Ellison Development LLC for the creation of the Gemini Public Improvement District in Precinct Three, Liberty County, Texas. Catherine?
Okay, so a couple of months ago, the court approved a, in a, a development agreement with Ellison for the construction and creation of a PID for the Gemini subdivision. Due to the lack of a numbering system for public improvement districts and, and MUDs and those types of things here in the county, we have gone back and made some fairly non-material changes to that development agreement. Specifically on the first page, we took out the requirement that there be a numbering system. So for the sake of transparency, I'm here asking you to approve those changes to this agreement. Nothing regarding the terms of the public improvement district or Liberty County's role in that changes.
And I do appreciate the transparency aspect of this, thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from David, second from Bruce. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 17, county attorney's office, consider and approve land suitability testing to be performed by LJA Engineering on property donated by Liberty County Solar Project to be paid with prepaid funds not to exceed $23,000. This one's been ongoing for a little while.
Yes.
We're fine to the point to where we received the check, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, so if, if you all recall, Liberty County Solar has, is donating property to Liberty County, but before we can actually um exchange title and accept that donation as part of that agreement that we made almost a year ago, um, we're requiring certain land suitability testing. And that, uh, it's, the costs of such are covered in that original agreement that we have with Liberty County Solar. But they have agreed to prepay as opposed to reimburse the county, which has taken a couple of different amendments to certain contracts. But we have received that, those funds from Liberty County Solar. And um, by you approving this today, this allows me to reach out to LJA and, and provide them with a copy of the access agreement and, and start the land suitability testing. I think what's required is a phase one environmental, a geological study. What is required is contained within the terms of that access agreement that's included in your packet.
Dwight, is this payment acceptable to you? Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 18, from county attorney's office, consider and approve resolution accepting a one-time donation from Natural Gas Pipeline Company of America LLC, which is, they call it Kinder Morgan, uh, to Liberty County in the amount of 384,608 dollars for the purpose of repaving a portion of County Road 109 in Precinct One due to extensive and continued use by the Natural Gas Pipeline for ingress and egress access to their facilities. Pretty self-explanatory, Catherine?
It is. Kinder Morgan has very generously agreed to donate um monies to help with the costs associated with their damage. This is a one-time payment. Uh, this is not subject to the terms of a road use agreement. Uh, we cannot go back for funds um under this resolution. This is simply the acceptance of a donation.
All right, were you?
Yeah.
Those are approved.
Second.
Dwight, okay? Got a motion in your. Me? That's Greg, okay. Second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 19, from the county attorney's office, consider and approve resolution accepting a one-time donation from Natural Gas Pipeline Company of America LLC, Kinder Morgan, Liberty County, in the amount of $16,006.32 to cover Liberty County's portion of the Tech Dot project restored White Spyro Bridge in 2021. Natural Gas Pipeline acknowledges continued use of this bridge with heavy equipment. May have led to significant damages to White Spyro Bridge. Okay, Catherine?
Uh, yes, this is very similar to the previous item. Uh, Kinder Morgan, uh, out of the goodness of their hearts, has decided to make a one-time donation to cover the cost of Liberty County's portion um on the White Spyro project that took place in 2021. Along with Tech Dot, the county was out of pocket $16,000 and some change. And, and they've agreed to reimburse the county. So whatever fund that came out of, uh, those funds will go directly back to that fund.
Good.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 20, uh, from county attorney's office, consider and approve order removing gate across County Road 614 and Precinct Four. Notice of consideration said owner having previously been given an August 21st, 2024 date to joining landowners.
I should say.
We need to, yeah, yeah. Fill that in there just in case. Uh, we probably need to move an executive session at this time.
Uh, I'm, I'm happy to. Ultimately, I, I'm gonna be asking the court um for a special meeting on this in the near future. Since we sent, sent out the notice, the uh, landowner who we've kind of been dealing with uh, uh, on the gate issue, uh, has hired counsel and uh, we have been aware of some of the issues, but he's um, uh, presented arguments that uh, caused me concern and I think we can iron it out. It's, it would be a matter of us digging through some very old records. The records uh, we're talking about are from 1914 and.
A little bit dusty?
Yeah, a little dusty, yeah. We, when this originally started, we thought we could maybe solve it with the county roadmap from, what's it, '07? But that has uh, not been the case. We, we're having to go back to the, uh, to the very dedication of, of this public road, so.
Well, in the case that uh the landowner has hired counsel, we don't really need to have an executive session at this point then.
No, sir, no.
And we really can't vote on this now.
Uh, correct. I would say, I would just ask for tabled uh, for uh, an upcoming special meeting and I'll get it to your office, your honor, to, to make sure that gets set.
Okay.
Make a motion to table.
Motion from Bruce to table, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, got that. Having no further business before the court, looks like
Make a motion to adjourn.
Before we get there, thank y'all. Before everybody gets up and runs out of here, let me say thank you to him and Dwayne, commissioners, everybody that was headed and putting the budget. We do have a budget, and we are